Some of the other districts do this really odd thing where they leave and take their in grade twelve to offer this to them, which just, I couldn't make hundred tales of it. I don't understand it. Alright, so just to recap, what would start is implementing an English course to support students that have gaps in grade level skills, renaming those English one and English two. We would stop automatically assigning all ninth and tenth grade students to the same English classes based on their graduation year. We would continue building rigorous English courses and offering opportunities for advanced learners. So we have the test out option for both English nine, English one, whatever you call it, and English ten. So like today, I presented to the eighth grade students who will be participating in an opportunity to complete some assessments over the last few weeks to determine if they are able to go straight into Mrs. Jones' English class. And then what that does is that opens the catalog up to them a year earlier. So if you have to take English in your freshman year, regardless of the name, and you have to take it in your sophomore year, regardless of the name, you might not be able to take those AP level courses until you're a junior. You may not be able to take some of those more hands-on CTE courses that a lot of kids love until you're a junior. So this is just giving some equitable access to students who, you know, the advanced learner pathways that there's nothing similar for students who struggle. So our goal is to, to provide more access for more students, whether they're advanced students or struggling students. Do you want to miss this time? Perhaps. Not. So I do have just that data. We actually called, so that was very important. Was there a question?
Yeah, Rick, Leslie, Rick asked a question, I'm going to want your feedback on here at the moment. So Rick asked a question like, what are we doing?
What are we doing in the junior high right now? We, we obviously have a big problem when we get to high school, and I have some background of what we have been doing in the past for our ELA. What are we doing now for our kids? What changes have we implemented this year to help them?
I think we were piloting Bookworms in the middle school. I can say it probably hasn't gone as well as it has in the primary. It's, it's a little bit, it's taking too long to get through anything, so the teachers are trying to kind of make it work. I think because of using the units of study prior, some of our kids have missed out on different skills, and so I think that's where looking at new curriculum will help, and this pilot was supposed to do that. I need to meet with my six eighth ELA teachers to find out, like, I know it hasn't been going the greatest, so then where's our, where do we go from here? But we have, I mean, they're using the reading interventionist. They see during our win time, some students that are in that red will go and see our reading interventionist to get some of those other skills. Today I did a training where we have a pilot for the rest of the year for third through eighth grade to do a reading intervention that is geared more towards the older kids. A lot of our interventions are focused younger, and so this pilot is geared more towards the elders where it's not so cutesy, like play games. It's still engaging for the students, but it will, they do a diagnostic test, they find out where their gaps are, and then they are kind of like forced to do certain lessons in like a module, and they have like twenty-two lessons, and they have to get, I believe she said it was like seventy percent, seventy, seventy-five percent before they can move on.
Is that reading or English?
Reading. Reading mostly, it's more with comprehension, fluency, those kinds of things, but it's geared more towards that.
What are we doing to gear more towards our English side?
Like the writing side.
He's talking like writing, spelling, grammar, those types of things.
Grammar, spelling, phonics, sentence structure, things that we've been lacking for quite a while.
That I would highly have to be asking our six eight teachers clear, but I do feel like our students with Bookworms now in our primaries get it all the time.
Yeah.
And now we have our reading, our personal reading plans that have now been implemented for our K three students that were in that red zone, and so obviously our six eight students aren't going to see that, but I feel like coming down the line, once we continue moving this way forward, we will start to see some of that, but it's not going to.
And I didn't want to interject with one, I want to interject with one thing is that because Leslie wasn't here when the, when the decision was made to pilot, so we went with Bookworms. And, and the Act Twenty is only the requirement up to third grade. What we made the decision to do, what we liked about Bookworms was, so we were going to do Bookworms through fifth grade, and then we reached out to the person who developed this and said, hey, you have anything for middle school? Because it made sense to have something sequential. Well, she responded and said, we got a beta version, and we're doing pilots, and it doesn't cost you a penny if you're willing to participate. So all the middle school stuff was free, and so I know we're having some struggles, but the idea was, the team was all on board with, let's try it, because we're, we're going to, it's phonics-based, like, like, I mean, it's, it's based upon the same thing that we're doing in the lower levels, and it just made sense. So we knew that going in this year was going to be a struggle, but we chose to do that for that very reason. What I like about what Tracy and the crew wants to build at high school is this, meeting kids where they're at right now, because we know we're going to see growth because of what we're doing in the primaries. That doesn't mean we forget about the kids that are already here and there. This course meets the needs of those students that are in that position right now, so that's what I really like about this is, it's not saying, well, eventually, right, eventually you have this great group of third graders coming through. It's, it's meeting the needs of all the students, and, and I feel like we were a year ahead on all this, like, we had another year to roll out all this extra, like, there was another year to wait here. We did the right thing, like stepping into it this year, because we're ahead of the game in a lot of these areas, so there's still work to be done on that area, but I feel like what we did this year is we made progress, but we're also finding out where some of those gaps. Leslie talked about the most important thing, and I think I heard Tracy reference it. With the years of doing the workshop, we have gaps, our kids have gaps, and we can't fill those gaps completely, and we're trying to fill, fill the cup slowly here in areas that we cancel.
And if I could also just address Mr. Winters' question, this is not just a Pittsfield problem, and I don't want anyone to think that I'm saying that it's a Pittsfield middle school problem or anything. When we just had the National Report on Education released within the last week or two, the highest number of students that are declining in reading at the most alarming rates are the bottom ten percent of students across the board, and it's not just a COVID problem, because it started in 2019. So I just want to clearly say that this is not a Pittsfield thing, this is some thing that's happening societally that we just, maybe it's bad literacy, maybe it's the number of schools that were doing workshop in the unit of study, like, we don't know the why, but this is not just a Pittsfield problem.
Do we have any summer school, you know, this sort of thing, like, you know, we have a math.
Eventually with Act Twenty, we will have a summer intervention, a summer reading intervention. It doesn't have to take effect, I believe, until it's either 2026 or 2027, but we have, we'll look into that too, because we don't know what intensive means yet, we're waiting for the state to define that for us.
For getting high school students to come in and learn to build the reading skills in summer school.
And, and just to know, just so you know, when you require summer school, you cannot
Count the minutes.
Count the minutes to get reimbursed, so that would be an expense, it would be an additional expense when it's required. Now, if we make it optional, as far as saying to families, here's an opportunity for a jumpstart, then you can still get funded for recovery, and I just want to make a point of that for the board, that that would be a fiscal impact. If you make mandatory credit recovery, you cannot fund it or claim.
And I think too, with Act Twenty, I think you have to offer it, you don't have to require it.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to, I don't see, she's got enough things. Karen, Miss John, welcome.
Michael says we're lying, folks.
We're lying.
But gee.
Alright, so the three of us are here with the committee, and so obviously that is what the land looked like before, and now here is what it's starting to look like, but this is even, you can tell there's no snow there, so there's been other things that have happened since then. So in that picture from before, the pavilion and the gazebo are both set up now. In January, the pavilion roof was completed, I think they picked a date, it was like right after, it was like super cold, they cleaned the next day when it wasn't as cold. The tables and the benches and the garbage, the succulents have been assembled, thanks to John and some of his crew, they were delivered to his house and were all put together there, and then they brought them over. We have benches that will be installed, hopefully this spring still, and then currently the final trim and the shake siding is being finalized and will be completed in the spring.
So there, there, there they are working, I can tell. Did I catch it? Sorry, can you go back down there?
And the, the bottom crew is Jamie Williams' crew, and the top crew is the construction class.
Oh, they're full. Yes, they took the harder project.
They did, yes, yes.
They learned a lot of math during that process.
Yep, yep, they put the brown one up, and the construction crews put the other gazebo up.
So some of the fundraisers that have happened, in November, there was a pasta dinner fundraiser that was held at the Els Lodge in Marshfield, totaling twenty-six hundred dollars. The pasta dinner raffle baskets earned thirty-eight hundred dollars. In December, Christmas cookie fundraiser, thanks to Julie and all of her baking skills, raised over twenty-seven hundred dollars. So to date, concession stand profit is about forty-five hundred dollars. Currently, they have raised, Lucy's Garden has raised over eighty thousand dollars, and I believe the goal, starting, I was before my time, was about, first we said seventy, and then we thought, well, we might run into problems, so we upped it to seventy-five, so we, about that now.
We have exceeded that number.
Expenses as of today have totaled a little over forty-five thousand dollars. So with some of the remaining funds and continuing to fundraise, these are some of the projects that will still be happening. Security cameras back in the area, updating that, some more lighting, the trim and siding on the two buildings, finishing the interior ceiling of the building, the benches in the gazebo, the high school class is going to put some benches within that gazebo, decorative metal bracing at the top of the gazebo post, a donor sign for people who are donating, they can have kind of a plaque, put up Lucy's Garden sign in front of the garden, the sign on the pavilion, and then we just hand out.
Never seen that happen. Is Google running it?
With that, we just still said that there will be more fundraising, and, you know, so we won't exceed, so we still have some balance, and if we're going to purchase something, we'll make sure that we have the funds in order to purchase anything.
Leslie, it says there'll be a ribbon cutting ceremony in May.
Oh, that was, I think, the last thing, yeah.
How are you planning to share that with every, or are you, I mean, like, who are you planning to invite, and how are we planning to share that? Or is that still in the works?
It is still in the works. Our, our goal was to have it done for Lucy's Garden and class, so that they can come back there and take pictures and have it mostly done. We're hoping we can, down at the bottom, you'll see trees, we're hoping to get that far. We've already ordered the security cameras, we've ordered the security lighting, the trim we looked at today, so most of this, these things on here are already paid for or are already in the works. The benches are going through the construction class, and that's already taken care of. The decorative bracing is just something that Steven had suggested to us, because it's just going to put a little more classy look to the edges of it, they're going to design it and put it out there. The donor sign, we're hoping to have that done by that May. It's a little bit, it's going to have to be Steven's sign class, not his construction class, so that's why we might not have that done. The sign is already done, it's just in the art room right now, they're putting the final touches on that. The pavilion sign is probably going to be the next spring class. So in saying that, if we can get all this done, we're hoping to put it out there on social media, letting everyone know, letting all of our donors know, we, we have a list of donors, we're hoping to send out letters to them telling them, this is totally accomplished, this is just a huge thing that you've done for us, it's beautiful out there, I hope everybody can go out there and take a look at it. The picnic tables, what did he say, it's going to house, it can house a whole class now, right?
Yeah.
Because we ordered some extras, so now an entire class, not just one teacher, but all teachers in that room, so like their whole class can sit out there and have a class out there, plus the seating in the gazebo, which is a small little circle area where they can kind of just hang out. The benches are going to be on the outside of the walkway, just for kids hanging out and just sit and have fun out there. So we're hoping that this whole line gets done by that ribbon cutting, so that we can put it out to social media, so everyone can come in there, take their pictures, make sure the graduating class sees it.
I have a question. First of all, the project has been just fabulous. I know that there's been talk of our, of our classroom for a long time, and I give a lot of kudos to the committee, and also working with John and some of your contacts in the cranberry industry has, has been really, really good. I see you've currently raised a little over eighty thousand dollars, and the expenses so far are forty-five thousand. And you're going to continue to fundraise, so what, what's the end goal?
The end goal is to make the garden look like a garden, which is going to take some time. So we're hoping that we can at least get some trees in there in May, but the whole landscaping and the whole flowers and the growing of the flowers might take a little bit longer. You just had a donation of some really cool blue rocks to tie in, so we're going to kind of make like a little pathway in there, it's just going to be really neat. But in the end, maybe the actual garden might take some more money, but, I mean, we're, we're close to being at our goal. I can't see us doing any huge fundraising, we just wanted to let you know that we don't plan to go over what money we have, and if we do, we will continue to fundraise for it, there's no expense that we're going to have to come and get approved for.
Thanks for that clarification. This project would not have been done without your connections and all the, he's like, I know a guy, we're like, okay! Yeah, so that sounds really very helpful.
Well, since we were right here last and asked for permission, we poured over thirty-five yards of sand and empty concrete, built two structures, one eighteen feet wide, ten foot tall, the other one twenty-five, twenty-four, ten foot tall, with all commercial dusted on lighting throughout. It was a pretty odd piece of real estate that we started with. And, and what we did is we tried to take advantage of every square foot we could within that odd real estate, turn it into something that didn't look odd, that looked like it belonged there, and still gave plenty of access to service the buildings, the air handlers that are back there. And the amount of money that we've raised and as far as we've taken the project thus far, I would say it's a real testament to the, the committee and the community to get behind this school and support good things like this.
And another thing that's really cool is that, we didn't even realize it in the beginning, but we have, we have asked so many high school students and so many elementary students, and we just got so many people involved in this, it's really neat, like, you know, two or three, four different classes, the art department is doing this, Steven is painting the signs, and Steven is making the signs, and it's just, it's really cool, it's turning out.
Yeah, just about every facet of it, we can involve students we did.
Very good.
Very, very good.
Thank you. Okay. Looks like I'm just going to stay up there. Going through the AGR report.
I'm going to not go through a whole lot of line by line here, but just so you can see, we have completed the winter scores for the AGR, and that would be our kindergarten through third grade. And so just looking at that, when we are trying to close that gap, we do look at class size, that that could be a factor, it might be instructional coaching if our class sizes are above certain levels, and then some of that one-on-one tutoring could be with our interventionist. So kindergarten, we need the class size requirement, so that works there, first grade, same thing, second grade, one class meets the class size, the other one has to kind of go to that instructional coaching because of that class size, and then our third grade is the largest, and so they also do that instructional coaching piece to that. And then just looking at, when we're looking at, how can we help students meet their goal? Tier one instruction is all the kids are getting all the support in the classroom, receiving, you know, all of the direct instruction from the teacher, using all of those different things, covering, social, emotional, all of those things that are factored in when we are doing this, and then using that, people are supposed to be there as well. Those students that might need a little bit more help, you can turn to that. Would go into tier two, and we look at the bottom, it says that might be ten or fifteen percent of our students in that grade level, and so any of those students might receive, possibly they are receiving special education services, or they might have a different type of plan. Now we have personal reading plans, so that would kind of factor into some of this, where we might just, they could still be in the classroom, but they might be just receiving a small group instruction on a targeted skill, and then they can do weekly or bi-weekly progress monitoring. And then the last part is that they're still not meeting, then you can go to tier three, and then again, that's only about one to five percent of our students, that might be a little more intensive, and so that might be where they are special ed students, or doing more five days a week of intervention, those kinds of things, and then we definitely are doing weekly progress monitoring. So just looking at our reading goals, so I just started with kindergarten, this is their reading, so the first one, it's blocked up there, but it says fall, winter, and spring, so we do AGR testing three times a year. I will just tell you next year, once we have figured out AIMS Web Plus, our AGR assessments are going to try to correlate a little bit more, so that we're not testing our students all the time, because right now they're doing AIMS Web Test, and they're doing AGR testing, and they're not always coinciding, so next year we'll try to streamline it a little bit more. But in kindergarten, they're trying to identify capital letters, identify lowercase letters, identify letter sounds, and you can see in the fall, out of thirty-five students, they were at sixty-nine percent, in the winter, hundred percent, but it's twenty-one out of twenty-six letters, that, that was the goal, was to have twenty-one, so now by the spring, we're hoping that they'll have twenty-six out of twenty-six. Same thing with identifying lowercase, they were at about fifty-seven percent, now they're up to ninety-four percent. And again, it's twenty-one out of twenty-six, so again, for the spring, we'll shoot higher. Identifying letter sounds, at the beginning of the school year, they're at eleven percent, and now they're up to ninety-one percent. And then they have a sight word list, they did not do it in the fall, but in the spring, or I'm sorry, in the winter, for first semester, the goal was to have twenty out of twenty-five, and they're at seventy-one percent already. That's kindergarten. First grade reading, we have sight words, again, they have, the goal is a hundred and twenty sight words out of a hundred and fifty, but in September, we do it in kind of chunks. September, they only need thirty-two words, in the winter, they need sixty-four, in the spring, then it'll increase to that hundred and twenty. So they had eighty-eight percent, with the thirty-two words moving up to sixty-four, you saw it dropped just a little bit, but again, they're increasing their numbers. The reading, using reading level, I found this at the now, the fall was reading at a level D or E, they were at sixty-nine percent, and we increased to level G, and now they're at eighty percent. So second grade, it's comprehension of a reading passage, so they're listening to it, so they needed four out of five questions, and, and then also using non-fic, non-fiction text features for comprehension, they needed eight out of ten. So again, you can see that their scores are increasing, and we continue to see that, hopefully in the spring as well. Third grade, they use, they do a reading comprehension assessment, the only difference between the fall and the winter is the fall, they just needed to answer two out of three, in the winter, it's six out of seven, because it's just increasingly getting a little more difficult, but their scores are increasing. Then they do a third grade sight word assessment, where they want forty-one out of forty-one sight words, and so they started at forty-eight percent and moved up to fifty-nine. Moving into math, so again, I start back in kindergarten, so their assessment is writing numbers, one to thirty, and identifying numbers, one to fifty, and so again, you see, the fall, they were at zero percent, they moved up to almost fifty percent now. And then thirty-one percent in the fall for identifying numbers, now they're up to eighty-three. So they're on track to meet those goals. First grade, writing numbers, and then they go to addition facts within twenty, and again, the goal is nineteen out of twenty-four, and subtraction facts within twenty are the same thing, and again, they've increased in all of those categories. Second grade is double-digit addition, with and without regrouping, they wanted eight out of ten, and then double-digit subtraction, with and without regrouping, eight out of ten again, and you can see that they've increased in both categories as well. Third grade, they do a fraction assessment, they needed seven out of eight, and then multiplication assessment, the goal was thirty-five out of forty-four, and again, you can see the numbers are still increasing. And that is all. Do you have any questions? We're doing good things.
Yes.
Yeah. My takeaway, good job. The teachers are teaching, the kids are learning.
Thank you, Leslie.
Okay, now we're on to AIG, we will post the update.
Yep, this can be short and sweet, what we're looking for tonight is one to two board members, that would be Pam has a draft of the RFP, the form that would go out, we are looking for one or two board members that would like to be on the review committee that would then review the request, the requests that come in and then bring, present to the full board. So tonight, what we're looking for is one to two board members that would be interested in being a part of that committee to review those proposals that come in.
We got our two.
Okay, let's get on to F then, and that is the board goals. We have, just a brief update on this. First of all is number one, the Pittsfield District Multi-Potentiations Donation Committee update, there's really no update because we didn't need, but we're in the process of scheduling another meeting. We met lots, right, and we talked about that at the last meeting. So, yeah, but we haven't had a second meeting. Okay. The PCC committee update, I see there is a meeting scheduled February twenty-sixth.
Nope, that date is one. There is none scheduled.
There's not, we're still trying to coordinate between the director and the two board members to make sure that, since this is a board, it's written by board goals.
Yeah, possibly March fifth at my apartment.
Yep. That was just as of the most recent due to poll, the, the original one did not work for the director, so.
Okay. Okay, so that will be in March.
So kind of typically, March fifth.
My notes didn't come through to let me pick any other dates, so I didn't know what it was like.
It's an option in the top right to edit your choices, or update your choices, and then.
And I can do the fifth.
You can do the fifth?
I can.
So Ted, Ted and Tiffany, so what I'm going to tell you is, I think Ted just went to March fifth.
March fifth. Okay, that's good news. And then third, our board goals is the future board retreat.
And then third, our board goals is the future board retreat.
The same time I thought.
Okay, future board retreat, we're scheduled for next Wednesday, February 19th. There will be an agenda coming out soon, but it's really gonna focus on catching up on those four goals that we set early in the year and kind of checking in on how we're doing and everything and what we need to do.
So I am really gonna try to begin, I can't guarantee I can be.
Sure.
But I think you should go ahead.
Okay.
And I will catch up and I, I will try.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Sounds good, thanks Julie. Okay, next, we're on to big Roman rule number nine, special action items. We have our team topic, which is races for new rates, I'm sorry, rates for new hires for hourly and salary. Yeah, sorry. Okay.
Okay, so can we just go around to the CPI, just very briefly.
Okay.
So the rates based on the handle from August 2024 are listed here. Now, these are the starting rates. One set of wages that were not on there were the 21st century learning grants because that sort of happened after that cap. But the rates we had came up for that, and that is in the budget that was supplied to DPI, certified teachers and administration, 1750 hour, all of our student helpers. And I have to say, I absolutely love, we have so many students who this is their first job. I've helped probably a dozen students fill out their paperwork. They're just so thrilled to be working, it's amazing. They're currently getting 1172, just like our summer helpers do. And then any of the community helpers, so we do have a couple of our community members who have stepped up and are, whether they're teaching coaching or how to play cribbage, whatever they're doing, they're at 1450. So Jason and I talked, CPI is 2.95. So we talked about, do we want to increase all of these rates CPI? And the more we talked about it, that would mean anyone hired this school year has worked an entire year. If what they get when we bring that to the board in April is CPI, then they're making the exact same amount as a brand new hire in July that has zero experience. So we were going to suggest we increase all of our starting wages to a 2.5% increase. So almost CPI, but not quite CPI and it's, it still does, I mean, it's close to what some of the other districts are doing as far as some of these hourly rates, but it's, it's hard to capture that because it's very proprietary and it's, unless you know somebody that knows somebody, it's hard to get those rates. You have a question, Mary Ann?
Oh yeah, I do.
Okay, so let's just take the first one, the instructional assistant.
Yes.
The rate per the employee handbook right now is $14.10.
Oh my gosh, yeah, the columns are flip flopped.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
The column are flip flopped, yes.
Right.
That's heads for the 2.5, this is, sorry, and this is a 2.95.
Okay. Yeah, I was like, this does not make sense.
Right, yeah. So then, these are also, I want to say in 21, I think it was, we came up with the years of experience increase as well. So these are the base rates for these. Some of them go up like 1.9% per step, per year of experience, some go up a little bit more. But these would be the base rates and then all those steps would increase for those as well.
If this is not the question you're asking, just tell me, thanks for the question and let's move on. Just curious why, because an instructional assistant would be one of our like.
A professional.
A professional assistant. Yes. So why would we pay someone from the community that's coming in to help with cribbage or, or.
I see what you're saying, right.
More money than our full time, like our, our instructional or our PCC, non-teachers and teachers. I'm just, I.
Non-teachers?
Like, I mean, I, the.
The non-lead teacher she's talking about.
Even the lead teacher, like why?
12, yeah, 12.56.
Why would someone like myself who came in and taught something get paid more than?
Well, I directly see what you're saying. These are set in the grant.
Can I answer that?
That's also set in the grant.
Two, there's two reasons, this is a great question to ask, because number one is, it's really hard to find people for the after school program and it's grant funded by that federal grant.
Right, that's what we budgeted.
So it's budgeted and it's not levy, it's, it's covered by the grant and it's hard to get people to drive here just to do two hours after school, like to come down and do, to do these things, so.
Right, and they, they're doing a lot of filling on Wednesdays when our teachers are in the LCs. So we don't have the teaching staff there coming in, so we do have outside services that come in, plus the student helpers.
I don't have any issue with increasing our staff. I just wonder, like, do you increase that one? I mean, I suppose an instructional assistant could choose to do that 21st century community helper, right?
So as, we try, it depends. I mean, on Wednesdays, yes, they do help.
That's the point is that they're driving here for two hours, so like, some of the people come from Marshville, so we have to pay a little higher rate.
Someone's gonna choose 4 hours a week versus six. So I mean, we're not really, it's not competing against each other, these two positions.
No.
Correct, they're not.
So someone was gonna say.
And they're, honestly, everybody that does a bit of retired.
To do our after school program, offer enrichment, yep.
Oh, those are the people from Discovery.
Those are the people from like Discovery and other people that come down to offer enrichment at the after school. That's paid for through that, the Nora Rogers Grant, those rates.
Right, those are, those are third party vendors, we get a separate bill for that. These are a batch of retired people who come in and help.
Better at those numbers and it's, they help for hour and 45 minutes to two hours a night, however many hours a week.
So yes, the titles are wrong, these are flip flopped, that should be 2.95. This would be the, excuse me, 2.5 and this is the CPI, 2.95. I apologize for that.
Yeah, we have that specific amount budgeted, like we have that, you know, the $400,000 over five years, the $80,000 a year. And what I would be honest with, tell you is, if we started having trouble filling those positions, we would likely look at increasing that even more within the grant money because we need to have people here.
We need to have the bodies.
We have, we need to have bodies here for kids.
Yes.
Within the premises.
So we're on. You mean, you want the bottom three doesn't matter for our revenue at all?
This is all funded with.
All through that grant.
But we do need to have it listed somewhere because the auditors will ask me, how did you determine that wage? So it does need to be in our handbook.
Those bottom three are all funded through the, the after school.
It is a federal levy, excuse me, a federal grant, so it 100% needs to be in our handbook.
So. Commandment wrong. So what you're asking is that the new hires would get the CPI rate.
No.
No, 2.5 instead.
The 2.5 rate for the new hires.
The 2.5 rate.
Yes, their base.
That's the base rate.
Yeah, I'm gonna, do you want me to give you Jason's version of why, like why we want to do that, not because like Pam said?
I, yeah, I understand that. Because someone who's had experience versus not experienced.
But we still need to attract folks, so we needed to raise that a little bit. So that was like a happy medium, a little passive given, but a happy medium is to not say full CPI. We discussed like what would be a number that would make us a little more competitive for these entry level positions and that was the two. So we're asking for the 2.5, not the 2.95 for this. We just wanted to show what the 2.95 would be.
Got it.
We're recommending 2.5. And then obviously, you, if the board wanted to tell us, we would be more comfortable with two. Like, we just didn't feel like going with the full 2.95 that would put them on par with people who've been here a year. But we need something to try to increase that entry level to try to attract folks for these jobs, so.
Okay, so let's go to the last one, the community helpers. Okay, just as a point of reference. So currently paying down $14.50 an hour.
Yep.
And the proposal is to go to 1530.
No, because those columns are misinterpreted.
The title's on my column, so.
The title's there. So it's 1493.
Four, okay, 1493.
Yep.
So that would be the starting wage, yes.
Yep.
And for someone that has a year of experience.
They would be at 15.
They would be at 1530.
Well, actually more depending on where they're at on the.
Well, someone right now that is earning 1450, that is working this year, we're not looking at how much of a raise they're gonna be getting next year.
That's a separate conversation.
That'll be idiots, right. But in theory, if all we're going to give, and I'm not saying we are only going to give CPI, but that's typically, you know, what school districts do.
Yep.
We just didn't want to have someone with one year experience that came in as an instructional assistant and now she or he has earned a year's experience and they would earn the same amount as someone coming in with zero.
Correct, okay.
Okay. We need to probably have a separate piece for the hourly, so separate motion for the 2.5, separate from this hourly.
I believe so.
We need a tab of motion.
I need a motion to approve the hourly as proposed with the 2.5% increase.
No, sir.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, but the presented increase for new hires starting after 7/125. Any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Right.
Let's take a look at the salary.
Okay, so as everyone is aware, we're but off the sentiment scale as far as increases in pay for the last two years because we've done CPI. So the scale has not been adjusted since 2022. So what I needed to do was adjust the baseline of our grid to be at where everybody is earning today. So in order to do that, I literally took everybody's wages, depending on which category they're following or anything. I just made sure that it would be 8.12%, 94% and 8.12% that that accumulated growth worked. The only place it didn't, and I just, I just caught this this afternoon and I was going through it, was a smidge at the top over here, but I would get that, should get to that. All the rest of these are falling within like $10 to $50 of each other. So where everybody is earning right now, they'll be back on the pay scale, okay? Now again, we're not looking at what they're gonna get for a pay rate. We're not doing any of that right now, we're just looking at new hires. So we're trying to get new hires coming in to be comparable to where our current staff are getting paid. Because this is how we put new people on their pay scale and if, if they're falling too far off, they're, we're behind the ball when it comes to offers to people. So then when I looked at it, I thought, okay, I'm gonna take what everybody was earning for 24, 25. I wanna add to that for 25, 26 at least CPI. So I did a up one step and over and in orange, it proves that every one of those numbers is 2.95% increase. Now, these are steps, these are not years of experience. If you accept this, I'll modify that document for years of experience. These kind of, these couple, three up here kind of fell off a little bit. I will have to adjust that so that they fall between bachelor lane and masters required. So the math came out where they're like just shy of, of being over.
Can you explain to me what the differences between these last two charts?
Yes.
Teachers' master.
The tops are broken up. Can you scroll down just a little bit, depth of the titles up here? So we have three lanes that were established that the masters are national board certification and then masters required, which would be your counselors, speech and language.
Okay.
Those are social.
So there's, that's a, that's a specific requirement.
For that position.
For that decision, they have to have a masters. So if someone earns their masters during the year, that's fine. Then the next year, so long as they have that paperwork in hand by the time they sign their, or by June 30th, even if they sign a contract under a bachelor, so long as we have it before the end of the school year, their new contract will reflect the master's pay.
But they can't get to that last, unless it is.
Unless they take.
For their.
Right, unless they take the position that requires, yes. So all I've basically tried to do, spent hours trying to do it to really check my faculties. That one didn't work out there, but I'm trying to get it to, to be back where it should be.
So is the lines here right now 2.95% higher than it is currently? Anyone have it written on here?
This.
Zero stroke.
Yes, because they, because if you go over and up, so this one, well, I see what you're saying, the difference between the two, it should be pretty close, I didn't do the exact math. I just took this number and I, so I kept the variance the same. I took this number minus this number to get to that number. That's why these all were a little bit different because my original, these, these were like 50 bucks less on the original and I, that's what I should have done, that's where I went on. But this used to be 41,105 dollars for our base pay. And we know just from what we've been offering people, it's, it's not enough.
Yeah.
It's not enough.
So you touched on it just a little bit, but with these steps, how are they different? How do they differ from years of experience? What, what, what meaning, what difference?
So can you scroll to the lower numbers then? They start getting condensed, so years of experience go down to about 35 or 36. And they're not, well, you can see a little gap here as far as increase. And then, so someone could have 32 years of experience and, see, I think I have that sheet here.
I guess how do they reach the next step?
They, they reach the next step by going to the next, like the next year. So long as they're not on a plan of improvement, next year they would go to the next step. But this is just basically to get everybody back on a step and for the new hiring because we have to, sort of like back in 2017, we put everybody on the grid. Now we need to get everybody moving again.
Okay, so just so I know, so if they're not on a plan of improvement, then there's steps for the following years.
There are steps, no, they're, they're, so like their years of experience go, well, let's look at the bachelor. That goes up to 34 years of experience. So, no, this is, this is steps.
This is steps.
That's why I need to know.
Yeah, so 34 years of experience for a bachelor would be 65,760. So you'd look at 65,760, so they would come in at step 25. They would get 66.
And once they're on course, then they'll move.
Then they go down.
Down, as long as they weren't on a plan of improvement. If you're on a plan of improvement, you do not.
Yeah, so this is where they're coming in, they're coming in.
We gotta get them on this.
We're gonna get them on a step.
We gotta get them on here.
And then without, as long as there's no action for improvement.
Yes.
They're gonna continue the next step down and keep that following.
Correct.
Yes.
Until they max, until they max out at the bottom of the steps here, yes.
Yeah, so this will get them on the grid. So what I'll be coming with in April is going to be very similar to this for what we're showing for increase of pay for teachers. Most likely, it's gonna be very similar to this, but it's not gonna be identical. This is just, what are we gonna offer our new hires for next school year? Because we're, we're starting, you know, to have to see applicants in new hiring and we've had inquiries and.
So why would it, why would it be any different? Because a different thing.
Because the difference, I think, I may be wrong on the hourly versus salary, but on the salary, the difference is you do hire them based on your years of experience. And then you get into the grid.
We do give experience to the hourly.
Yes, the hourly do too. So what you are approving was face zero, no experience.
So that number would be higher duly for the hourly employees. If they come in with experience, they would start at a higher rate. That's for no experience, hourly employees come in with no prior experience.
So what we're looking at though in front of us is you adjusting this because we have adjusted the teachers, but this didn't get adjusted.
That is correct.
Absolutely.
So the reason what you might bring us is just a slight bit different is because you're trying to reconcile them and there just might be a couple of, but there shouldn't be too.
It'll be minimal for the first year. Yes, correct, minimal for the first year. Because all these, like, moving a step down and over, you know, you're going to get a two point nine five percent increase, but the step change here is not two point nine five. Like the eleven hundred and thirty-nine is not two point nine five percent increase.
So I think my question is, once you have the other, are there two graphs? Or is it one graph?
This will be the new hire graph for just our new hires for this year. So that's sort of what we had to do in seventeen.
One year and then they'll.
For one year.
And then they'll be on the one that you're going to have everybody on.
Correct.
Okay, I got it.
Yes.
Because I'm like, why would you have two different?
Just to get them off.
Just to confuse them.
Yes. I got it.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I got, no, that, that's a perfectly good question, but we just have to get a.
So when you.
Up my stack on.
Right over this one.
This will be just for the hiring.
Yes.
Not what we're going to offer our current staff. For one year.
And then the new hires will go on.
Will all go on the base scale that will be presented in April.
Yeah, sure.
Yes.
Okay. I would suggest that we get a new title on this. It's Salary Model Plan K-Grid Teachers. It should say first, new te, new hires or something. Am I looking at the same one as you folks?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, the other one used to be called Salary Model Plan Three or Five or Six, I don't remember the number. Um, I just re-titled it. So it's. Call it New Hires. Twenty-five, call it New Hires. Well, okay, I can add new hires to it, it still only do twenty-five, twenty-six though.
So this would be an example, it'd be like, we're going to start, the principals are starting to post jobs are going to be if people retire, is that if someone comes to us from Wisconsin Rapidsville District.
Twelve years' experience.
Twelve years, we would be able to reference this and tell them, here's what that would be on our model.
How does it compare to our stuff? It's like a, like if we approve this for new hires, so someone is going to see this and then be like, I'm making.
This might not really work.
No, no, because they're twenty-five, twenty-six. So I've already projected it out when I was working on the projections for the referendum. Um, so like our, our forty-one hundred, one hundred and five dollar brand new hire last year will automatically be going to forty-three, five eighty-seven. Because they were at zero, now they're going to be at step one approximately. I'm not saying that's exact because this is not that April document. But they're going to be getting about forty-three thousand, five hundred. So they are going to get a bigger boost because their hiring has been on that old grid. So the people that have been hired in the last few years are going to get a bigger boost at. Then everybody will be back on the scale again, like they were finally then in eighteen, nineteen. And we'll all go fine until we go off the scale again, which, you know, nobody minds going off the scale when it's an increase in pay. So I'm just saying that we have to get everybody back on, so what we're offering is more than mine.
And to answer, Rick had a great question. Rick asked about, do we give years of experience when we hire people? The answer is yes. We do not cap years, like we give experience that they've earned in a, in any school setting um, that's applicable to the role in hourly employees, applicable experience. In, in a similar job, we do get full years of experience because that would be another example of, if you don't, you're going to fall further behind districts. Right now, it's very competitive in hiring market, so.
So are there any other questions about this chart?
If not, I would recommend we approve the new hire A-grade grid for the teachers. For salary personnel, that's salary personnel.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the K-grid for new hires that are on salary. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. I'm going to go to the other. Oh my gosh. I'm lost on this stuff here. Too many things open. Okay. Do we have a model pioneered? I guess.
No, that was just the, that was just the explanation.
Okay, got it.
Just discussed.
Got it. Okay, um, I can read people count for January ten. I redo Jason.
Well, I can find it because I can't get logged in here. Yeah.
Up by one.
Up one.
I'll make a motion to approve the come to five hundred students in attendance for January tenth to about two thousand and twenty-five.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the January people count. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. I would see a valatorian and salutatorian for the class of twenty-two, five.
So we have both of our names. Our valatorian is Miles Gray and our salutatorian is Bryn Friday.
I'll make a motion to approve Miles Gray as valatorian and Bryn Friday as salutatorian for the class of twenty-two, five.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Miles Gray as valatorian and Bryn Friday as salutatorian. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Um, the academic excellence scholarship.
The academic excellence scholarship recipient is Miles Gray.
Okay. Um, I would like to make a motion to approve Miles.
I'll second. I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Miles Gray as the recipient of the PHS State Academic Excellence Scholarship for the class of twenty-five. Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. The PHS Technical Education, Technical Excellence Scholarship recipient.
Technical Excellence Scholarship recipient is Carter Lukey.
I'm going to motion group, gives the recipient to the PHS Academy of Excellence for the class of twenty-five.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Carter Lukey as the recipient of the Technical Excellence Scholarship. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to F, the April first school board election, approve paper ballots for the town of City Point and the town of Finley.
I'm going to motion to approve the April first twenty-five school board election paper ballots for the town of City Point and the town of Finley.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve paper ballots for the towns of City Point and Finley. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Um, next, we're going to appoint, appoint the Board of Canvassers.
I state that I appoint Mark Dard and Carol Harrows to the Board of Canvassers. With the school district clerk myself to substitute the school district board of canvassers.
Sounds good. Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome.
Um, I would reset the date, date and time to the Board of Canvassers. It is going to be on Wednesday, April second, at one p.m. in the district office. Policy readings.
Mary Ann, I ask you a question. Would the board have any issues? The administrators have been putting in a lot of like unions, but would you guys mind if I dismissed the principals? I, all the policies are in my realm. Would you mind if I, I know some of them are afraid to say it, but they have some, some sick children at home and other situations. There are no specific policies for them on.
Thank you for all that you've.
Thank you.
On your own basis, uh, but I agree with you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's look at those second moves on policies. Updates, number one, updates to policy for the, for new policies to schools and sponsorships.
No changes since the.
Um, you know, can we do all these, um, schedules in a day or do we need to.
Yes.
Okay, let's do them.
I'm going to motion to approve.
What's the.
Delution of policy.
Oh, oh, eight forty-one, sorry.
Yep, okay.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the policy updates noted on the agenda and the delution of old policy. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Um, now we have first reading of policies. The first one is recruitment and hiring of the district administrator.
So is that just WASB recommendations?
Yeah.
Because it's pretty much get rid of everything we have and start over?
Yeah, and it's just going to be for like, that one, it used to be for all administrative staff and then that one's going to be just for administrative.
Just for the district.
And then down in five thirty-three, that'll be for all district staff except for the administration. Ah, okay.
I'm saying, look, words.
And then like the administrator contracts, is that just brand new, we never had one?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay.
As we were having discussions, we realized we did not have a policy related to that, so.
And the same thing with the board administrator roles and working relationships is we just never.
Never had one, I thought it would clean it up. But the next question's open. Sounds good.
And again, the same with the evaluation, we just don't really had it.
Yes. Okay, and again, these are all WASB recommendations.
Yeah, and they're mainly filling gaps. So Deb is good at that, looking at things, it's, it's good to have, like, you don't think of the stuff till it happens, but it's good to have a policy related to these things.
Yeah, makes sense.
I had one just quick question, I'm like, two sixteen?
Two, do you say two sixteen?
Yeah, the temporary arrangements.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's obvious if something happens to one of the administrators that he would step in.
Yeah.
And I know if you're sick, you probably have like.
I, I have an, yeah, I have said.
But do we need to have a policy that could figure out like unexpectedly, outside of a time that something needs to be in? There has to be like a change man. I mean, it's like, you're off because you're sick today and, you know.
But doesn't that cover the last paragraph?
The last paragraph. It's what's the definition of temporary, I suppose?
Yeah. Nate, I think, I get what you're, um, like, so I'm giving examples. Like when I go to the superintendent's meeting and I owe it for the day, I designate someone in charge of it in the district here while I'm, even for a couple hours, I'll leave someone in charge. But you're talking like, what would be.
Your succession plan.
Two weeks if I'm over.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, what about you, Jason, being here?
No, no.
I just, no.
I get surgery.
If we're going to have it for everybody else, I mean, you're.
Yeah.
I'm saying like the board has to do something, you know, and that gets it.
That's a good question. Just putting wasp in there, something, I don't know.
And I'm not sure it fits necessarily in that policy. I think, um, because that policy really talks about you filling in and assigning. It's not really talking about your role and what happens with you. I just think it brings up a question to think about, like, what is this succession plan, something, you know, if you, you know, end up being out for three months or something like, or, or, you know, something different, like just an unexpected, you're not here and what, like, what would that mean? And I, I think what would help is it gives the board then direction on what's our immediacy for us to be, like, who would immediately be in charge? And then what, what does that then like trigger for us in regards to like what we would do?
Makes total sense.
So I don't think it fits necessarily in that policy. I think that it's just another really good question of the succession.
I see Deb writing furiously, I'm assuming she's going to do some research.
Yeah, I'm wondering if WASB has something on it.
Yeah.
It just hasn't floated to the surface yet.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do some research on that.
Okay. That sounds good. Um, any questions about the other ones?
I'm okay with moving forward the eleven.
I didn't even have any of those transcripts in this book.
Okay. Um, I, yeah, I don't need a motion, we don't need a motion, we just move forward. Okay, I am aye. Here we go, and this is a very specific motion that my understanding WASB has recommended. Is that correct, Deb?
And this would also be, um, this was discussed at the superintendent meeting a week and a half ago by several superintendents. I actually brought this question up. And this is how legally they've been advised to. It coincides with wasp, because it's that we will suspend that policy as of that date. Any complaints that come in, that the person says it happened during that date, the new policy have to be investigated under the old policy. But everything that happened prior to that date and from the date the lawsuit was filed, which is when we would make this effect, would be under our old policy. So the likelihood of getting a complaint that fell in that window, that no one has made a complaint, but if that did happen, that's why we have to have the language that we re-adopt the former policy as of that date is, that's the, the guideline is, is that, uh, that we re-adopt as of that effective date of the lawsuit. And any complaints that happen during the time that the, the new old policy was in place have to be investigated under those constraints. I hope that makes sense, Clarissa Modred, but factually, this is going to get us back to our old.
To our.
Uh, to our old policy with the updates that were prior to this.
You're talking about the three month window.
That is correct. And it will have to be someone to make a complaint saying it happened during that three month window. It likely would have already been filed if there was a complaint coming in. I would gladly make a motion to suspend July eighth, two thousand twenty-four adopted updates policy one thirteen, one thirteen rule, one thirteen exhibit that included the two thousand twenty-four Title IX regulations and re-adopt the former policies and procedures that reflect the two thousand twenty Title IX regulations. Updates to staff contacts.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend the policy we passed in July and revert back to the former policies and procedures that reflect the two thousand twenty Title IX regulations. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Um, I am aye, legislative updates. Um, WASB is having a day at the Capitol on Wednesday, March twelfth. Um, if anyone is interested in attending, usually what they do at these day at the Capitol things is in the morning, there's some education things going on at the hotel adjacent or close to the Capitol. And then in the afternoon, you go and make legislative visits. Um, you know, we were writing that with some of our legislators. Um, you know, if folks are interested in attending this, would you do that? Or did you suspend all our programs?
The, the cost of this would be only if you were claiming mileage.
Only.
So if we.
Isn't there registration?
No. But as far as our wasp membership gets us, would get us into the, I don't, I can double check, but I don't believe there's a registration fee.
Oh, and I thought.
I've seen one. Well, if you did, I'll, I can double check.
I'll check on that. But if anyone is.
I've seen one, so I changed my mind.
Yeah, can you check on that?
Yeah, if anyone is interested in attending this content, Jason. Um, Governor is doing his state to state address, I'm sorry, budget address next week, Tuesday. It's going to be interesting. Um, I think it's, I'll just leave it at that, it's going to be interesting. Um, and we'll probably talk about this a little bit next Wednesday, but the idea of, um, doing some legislative advocacy and encouraging the community to do that. Another thing that W A S B has rolled out really recently, and I haven't looked at it yet on their website, it just came out last week. But they are encouraging school districts who have specific asks that they wanna make to actually adopt a model resolution to that effect. So say, for example, if we want to adopt a resolution indicating our support for, um, any, um, increase in per pupil revenue would be outside the revenue limits.
Yep.
We could adopt a resolution like that, get it posted on the W A S B website and also send it to our, um, elected officials. That's something that I'll look into a little more prior to our meeting next Wednesday. Any comments or questions on the legislative update? Okay, number eleven, public comments. I don't think so. Future agenda items. Number twelve, um, I almost did administrative staff, uh.
We had talked about potentially March for having the, uh, that would be the directors coming in and getting their, like, a, a report. It could be March, it could be, um, April. Honestly, we could be flexible depending on what else is on there.
Okay, sounds good.
Liquidated damages?
Yep.
Either in March or April?
Y- yes, because you, you guys saw my comps, right? Like I did to, like, it's all a blur to me. I got you the comps for liquidated damages, right? Okay.
Okay.
I don't know what we have to do with that.
I'm getting old. Sometimes I'm trying to remember what, yeah, what I gave you and what I didn't. I apologize.
Yeah, but we did say we discuss it again.
Yeah.
So, um, updates to the, um, promotion and retention thing. I know W A S B has sent out a lot of information on that. I understand that's something Leslie's working on.
We're waiting because it's related to Act Twenty, and, and we're waiting for some definitive language as to what that is gonna look like related to Act Twenty, so we're kind of in a holding pattern because we don't wanna adopt something that is contrary to what they're gonna announce.
Yeah, makes sense. Uh, we're looking at a guiding coalition update, you know, on the P L Cs in March.
Yep.
And we're going to do this here at college now in early college credit program applications. Will those come in March or April?
Uh, March, it actually was, uh, Taylor gave an update on that.
Okay.
I, I believe it's March.
Okay. Anything else besides liquidated damages policy that we need to add to that list?
What did we say earlier for others? Remember, we said we were gonna add something. You asked another thing today that came up.
We have Olivia, Olivia on in the fall.
Oh, Olivia, they come back and give a.
In the fall.
After, well, that'll be in the fall. Yeah, that's, that's way others.
Right.
After they go to Wash, uh, fill out for this, um, I knew there was something.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm not sure what we're gonna discuss at the, um, childcare center meeting. I don't know if the next meeting is appropriate, we're not doing what we talked about, or if you want something in private and then say.
I would, so here's what I'm gonna tell you. What we've prepared is, we, we, Pam has run numbers. I asked her to run numbers on, for instance, like, we're gonna talk about existing staffing and waitlist, but I asked Pam to run numbers on open roll-ins into the childcare. Like, how, how many families brought kids in and then those kids that are here because of that, because that's an important piece for the board to have of the hidden, some of the hidden revenue that comes in by having the childcare center. These families brought in, then their kids are in now first or second grade and continuing.
Before we have this meeting, I just, I wanna come in, like, on my shore, so I'm gonna talk to Pam and have like the as detailed explanations made on how we levy this money.
Yes.
So I have to stand before we have a meeting.
Makes sense.
Cause every time I read about it, I get one more.
Yeah, I think that would be valuable.
I think that's how G P I set it up.
And I also want, like, I wanna think about what are the right questions to ask in that meeting and what are the right questions potentially asked of outside of the meeting because I don't want anyone to perceive that I don't think people are doing great work, because they are. It's just about are there some things or how can we share the messaging or how can we continue to strengthen our movement? And I think sometimes when you're sitting there and it's your job, like, it's just hard enough to feel like, and, and it's just not the intent. And so there's some questions that could get asked and some good understanding could happen around that, just to assure that any of our current employees don't feel, like, just don't feel like anyone's questioning their, their work or their job, things like that.
Was it appropriate to share that with Jason and I before the meeting, so we can talk more before we, like, bring our lines to it and you can help us.
Well, cause I'll, I'll be clear, I, like, and I appreciate you saying that, Julie. Like, I, I've had, I have a saying, just want to be set to get better.
Right.
Right? And, and this is kinda how we operate this district, though. We look at things and we look at areas for growth.
Let's tear it apart and see if we can even do better because it's had.
I, I agree.
It's had struggles. It doesn't mean that someone's, someone's not doing their job and that's why there's struggles. There's just struggles still, like.
Yes.
Let's bring a few more heads to the table, but I just really want to make sure that everyone knows we feel that way because, because I think we have to talk about and dig into some hard things to try to uncover how we can do it better. And I just don't want anyone, like, I, I know some of the questions.
It's our responsibility to make sure it's run properly, so if feelings get hurt unintentionally, I mean, if you're doing a lot of, you know.
We're, we're gonna ask and answer the difficult questions during this meeting, and that's the.
Like, one thing, like, I'm gonna bring, I want my task to broaden, I wanna explain to you what part of this money is for.
Fund eighty.
Cause it doesn't ring a bell.
Yeah.
So I've had preliminary conversations with, with everyone involved to make sure people are very good. This is, this is not like an inquisition. This is an idea of, we all want the childcare center to be successful. All of us do. But, but we're gonna have to have, ask some difficult questions here about what, what are areas for growth? Like, where can we get better? What do we do well already? Let's build on that and where do we get better? Now, what I will tell you, like, there's no way, no matter how we say it to people, people are gonna feel when we're asking questions, like you get, you internalize it sometimes and stuff, but conversations been had about the ideas. We all have the same goal, right? Like, and, and we need to, we need to ask these questions and dig into this, so, but I appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, so, um, we, uh, the board would consider moving into closed session for Wisconsin's statute nineteen dot eight five point one point C. Uh, roll call, Julie?
I'll make a motion in the closed session.
I'm sorry, yes. We made a motion first and a second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Yeah, closed session motion for three minute break.
Yes.